Okay. Got everybody, I guess we'll six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. We, Mr. Lyons, would you confirm verification of quorum?
We have all trustees present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is action item approved training for Roberts Rules of Order and trustee Barnes is the point of contact if you would, sir.
Well, we don't need to make this too overly formal. I think everybody with that everybody received the email that I sent out with some links and some samples of the video of the service that was there. Did anybody not get that?
I got it.
I don't want to go and I don't want to go into a long spiel about it unless anybody wants to discuss it. I'll just for the record state that I did invest in it of my own resources from my own personal edification. And it comes with a board license for up to like 20 members so that it include everybody. And so I am offering it at my expense. If the board wishes to reimburse me, that's fine, but I'm not gonna do anything about it. I didn't see or find any other competing types of trainings that was nearly as entertaining and thorough. So I threw it out there and said, I think we all kind of agreed that we need this kind of a training if we're going to adopt this kind of requirement in our board policies. So without further ado, I will just make the motion. And if anybody seconds it, we can discuss it further if necessary. So I move that NIC Board of Trustees.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
Accept the training. Go ahead.
Could I interrupt you just a minute?
Sure.
Because having the description that you just gave us that the programs are available to us. I think it's like any seminar or any other training session, you know, the trustees can elect to go or not go and that sort of thing. And the fact that the resource is available to us, and I think we should reimburse you. But I don't think we need a motion on this. I think it's just that we let everybody know that there's a system available to train them and how they can log on to it. And they're gonna trustees are gonna do that at their at their leisure, I think. But I don't think we need a motion on it. I think you've set it all up perfectly.
Okay, so probably if it comes to it, then the the motion would be if you did decide to reimburse me, that would be a motion for an expenditure. So that would probably require the motion rate.
All right, then I'll make that motion to reimburse trustee Barnes for the the expense of setting up this training program.
And I'll second that.
Michael, this is Todd. Two questions. One is, as you sent us the original snippets that we've reviewed, is that the same thing you would just then send us the additional materials for our review?
No, those were those were freely available YouTube videos of that person. Once I have your approval to turn on your accounts, I've actually already given them the email addresses and names and the positions. And they're waiting for me to say, yes, we approved it and to go ahead and do that. Then you will get an email to log in and conduct the self-paced training at your leisure.
Okay.
And I probably state that the total cost of this was less than $500.
That was my next question. What was the cost of the of the material?
Yeah, I have two email receipts that I can forward to wherever.
All right.
Shannon.
To Shannon.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We we have a second. I asked a couple of questions. Are there anybody else with questions or comments or discussion? And the motion at this point is just to reimburse trustee Barnes for his expenditure for the training materials. And can I guess if you're amenable to it, maybe a slight modification to your motion. I don't know if we need it or not. But Michael indicated that he's provided information on our behalf, our emails and that sort of thing. Do you want to make a motion that says that to authorize Michael? Go ahead and turn that on so the materials can be sent to us. And in concert with that, we'll reimburse him for the training material, cost of the training materials.
I mean, I'd be happy to amend it, but I don't think we need to. He set it up.
Yeah.
And so long as he uncorks it so we can get at it, I don't think we need a motion for that.
Okay, just was wondering, didn't know what your thought was on it, if that we needed to expand that a little bit or just stay where we're at. Anybody else with anything on that?
Real quick.
Oh, sorry, who was that?
Just Greg here. Just real quick. Thanks for doing this, Mike. Or trustee Barnes.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Anybody else? Okay, not hearing any more questions or comments. We'll go ahead and we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, I think that was everybody. The any, are there any nays? The motion passes. All right. Thank you, Michael. The second item on the agenda, also an action item, is to approve automatic reply for a board at nic.edu email account. And trustee Barnes, you are the point of contact for that also, if you would, please.
Yes, I asked that this we put on the agenda, just in light of some some recent communications. It seemed to me that an email address that is inclusive of all the board members and that we don't really have a process for having a board official reply that we should have a courtesy auto reply indicating to the sender that all members of the board actually do receive a copy of the email. I had some additional ideas to add to the auto reply that I would like to propose. So with that said, to open the discussion, I move that we adopt an auto reply to the email through the NIC IT department.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
May I have a second by trustee McKenzie? Trustee Barnes, since it's your initiative, you get the first shot at it, if you would.
Okay, so let me just take a shot at this, just so you can hear what my initial thoughts are. My response suggested response would be to this like this. Dear constituent, thank you for contacting the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College. Please be assured that every member of the board receives a copy of your email. Any official response from the board will come from the current chairman after consultation with the board as a whole. Due to Idaho open meeting laws, the board would not be able to formulate an official response without either calling for a special meeting to discuss it or to address your inquiry at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Occasionally, the chairman or a board member may refer your inquiry to the NIC president for a more expedient response if warranted. Again, thank you for your message regards, Board of Trustees, North Idaho College.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Howard.
Yes, I have a, I guess a comment more than, well, it is a question, too. Both of these agenda items are worthy of discussion and worthy of the board's attention. What I'm puzzled by is why we have a special meeting called in order to address these when we have a regular meeting set up in mid-month as normal. We have had so many special meetings in the last year, year and a half. And I would think that the special meeting should be directed at something that is time sensitive and something that needs to be responded to before we're able to get to a regular meeting. And quite frankly, I see no immediacy about these items. I think they're valid and I think they're important, but I don't see an immediacy about them. And I'm wondering why we have a special meeting for this.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard, are you directing that to question to myself or to trustee Barnes?
Well, I'm directing it. Whoever can give me an answer.
Well, I'm the culprit, so may I respond?
Trustee Barnes, please feel free.
I'm the culprit, Ken. So the reason I called for the special meeting was specifically for the training. We had agreed at the last regular meeting that we would not make the rule Roberts Rules of Order immediately effective, but effective at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So having found a reasonable training that can be completed in a reasonable period of time for us to be able to effectively work from the same page, if you will, and the same thing. Then I felt it, I felt it warranted to call for a special meeting to adopt this so that you could take advantage of it. Having approved me providing it, I didn't want to be in a position where I was accused of acting independently without consultation with the entire board. I found it. I wanted to use it for myself. I thought it valuable for the board. I thought it valuable to complete this kind of training prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting when it's supposed to be officially part of our process to to use Roberts Rules. So that we are all equipped best. And since we were having the meeting, I thought, well, maybe I could just throw this other thing on there. So I apologize for that. There was just some some activity in our inbox that I thought made it more urgent. So both of them were were my fault and my call. So.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah. Trustee Barnes, thank you very much for the explanation and I can understand your motivation. I might still tend to disagree that this has the immediacy necessary in order to call a special meeting. I think the special meeting should be reserved for really more immediate needs. For instance, we got a letter from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe within the last day or two. It really requires a response to it and it's not on this agenda. And I understand why it was just, we just got it in the last day or so. We could amend the agenda and talk about it, but that's the kind of thing that I think we ought to be doing with the special meetings is is trying to address items that need a quick response. So I, while I appreciate your point of view, I still think that we ought to try and reserve the special meeting status for more immediate problems. Thank you for the explanation.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the motion that's on the table? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't didn't unmute properly. Well, just a quick question. From my understanding, trustee Barnes, you're really just trying to do a read receipt so that the public knows we received their email. But you are suggesting that individually, other trustees wouldn't respond to constituents if they felt it was appropriate, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, my, may I respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, trustee Barnes. You bet.
I guess the emphasis on that one middle paragraph says any official response from the board. You know, will come from the current chairman after consultation. There's, you know, it's not to say that any one of us couldn't reply. I did want to make the the comment that everyone should be very careful about whether they do a reply all. I think that should almost never be done. Be very careful because you might include people who may may not should not be on a reply all comment. It's just very dangerous. But that's something we can address in a policy or something.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Wood.
And Michael, that's fine. I don't have any disagreement with that. Your proposal is fine, just with a read receipt. And if other trustees want to respond to constituents, they can do so. And we don't, there's no need to reply all.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? And I'll wait a moment because I want to give everybody a chance to chime in.
Yes.
Yes, is this?
As I understand, yeah, to understand that the motion is simply to adopt a received message to be sent automatically to a sender of a message to the board. The content of that was suggested by trustee Barnes. But as I understand it, the motion is not addressing the content. It's addressing the fact that we will adopt at some point in time a message that will go out. Is that right?
Trustee Barnes, can you clarify what the sample language that you provided to be included in your motion to be adopted?
Well, let me just give you a little taste of Roberts Rules. So this could easily be somebody could call for division, which 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 would be that this should be two motions. The first motion to agree to have an auto reply message to senders, a follow-on motion if that passes would be to discuss the content. So the motion on the floor should be to adopt an auto reply message to incoming messages.
Okay, so in response to the query from trustee Howard, then it is just at this time, a motion with a second to adopt the to have the auto response for the email at this time. Is that correct?
Yes.
With a second motion to follow if this is approved.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Trustee Barnes, did you have a follow-on motion that you'd like to make?
Well, the motion at this point would be to come to an agreement on content of a response. And I would like to provide this in in pieces to see if we can discuss this piece by piece because I think some might want to change some of those things that I have in there. So if you will indulge me, let me take the first two lines, which I think would be fairly agreeable to everybody. And that would be, dear constituent, thank you for contacting the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College, period. Please be assured that every member of the board receives a copy of your email.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Oh, we need a second in the vote, right?
Was that the motion?
Yeah, so the motion is to to discuss the content of the message. I need a second for that. That's right. Thank you, Ken.
But, yeah. Do I have a second for the motion to discuss the content?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, trustee Barnes, we would come back to you since it was your motion and you have started the discussion of the motion.
And I've already started. So I've already, right, so the chairman didn't give me get me in line. All right, so first three lines, if we can agree. So the first three lines, does anybody have a problem with that?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I don't know if I have a problem with it or not. I guess I don't like drafting these things when I've first seen them and unable to think about it and talk about them. And sort of what I would rather do is have you circulate your proposal to all of the trustees. Give us an opportunity to make some modifications if we feel like it. And just circulate it so that when when it finally comes to a motion, we've all had a chance to think about it. And to the extent we want to get involved in it, I'm really uncomfortable with doing it firsthand like this. So I would prefer to table this until we get a chance to circulate it and get some, give some thought to it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, trustee Barnes.
So what what Ken is is asking for, and I would agree. And so just so your first sort of lesson in in this is when you table something, you're laying it on the table to potentially be discussed because something else is more urgent on the agenda. What we want to do is postpone this to the next scheduled regularly scheduled meeting requires a second. There is no debate and requires, I believe, two thirds vote, so requires four votes.
I believe you're right. And I also believe we don't actually, we don't withdraw the motion or anything like that. We keep it there. We're just with the second table.
That's right. That that motion that that motion becomes on the unfinished business of the next agenda.
Right, as we've corrected the agenda titles. Okay, okay, so do so who is actually going to make that motion that says we're going to table this? Trustee Howard, were you making the motion to table it?
No, not to table, to postpone to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Pardon my parliamentarian inter interruption.
No, that's okay. Let's get it right. So trustee Howard, will you make the motion to postpone, sir?
Yes, motion postponed to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
Trustee Wood seconds the motion. All right, is there any further discussion or comment? Oh, actually, we don't because we're postponing. So I think we're done. We just have to take the vote. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. All right, that motion carries. It is postponed and will appear under unfinished business at the next regularly regularly scheduled board meeting later this month.
Chairman, point of information.
Yes, trustee Barnes.
This is a point of information to Mark Lyons. Can I directly send that out or should that come from the president or maybe Shannon?
That's a good question. I think it's probably most appropriate that you send the language to share to Shannon and that Shannon will send it out to all board members.
I will do that.
They can at least have that available for the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the appropriate guidance. So trustee Barnes, if you would, at your convenience, please forward that to to Shannon and she can distribute it to the rest of us. All right. That comes to the end of the agenda as I have it for the open session. Is there anything that I may have missed? Mr. Lyons, is there anything else that needs to be considered before adjourning this meeting?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so. I think we're not really adjourning the meeting. What we're going to do is we're going to go into executive session. And then we're going to get off of this link and go on to a new Zoom link for executive session. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, trustee Howard, you can make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add to this to a discussion that we're having now, a response to the letter that we received from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe.
I second that motion.
Okay, trustee Howard, it's your motion with a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, we all, I think are aware of the letter. I'm assuming we have all read it. It was a a kind nudge from the chairman of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe that they were having some concerns and difficulties with the situation here with our governance at NIC. And I think the letter was was sent in a in a fashion as to try and help us move along in curing whatever problems we have. And I think it deserves a response. And the response should be sent out fairly quickly. It indicates to them that we also have this concern or we're trying to remedy our our issues here. So I don't think this can wait for a month. We had a letter some time ago from a number of physicians and healthcare providers. And I remember making the same motion at one of those meetings that we should respond to them. We did not. We also had a letter from the State Board of Education, as I recall, and we haven't responded to that. And I, I think this is not a good habit to get into not responding to groups that have strong affiliations with NIC. And we should give a written response to a written inquiry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of information I probably need to make at this point.
Okay.
This is a pending a motion to amend the agenda that comes up in the middle of a meeting. That is can be appropriate, but in to comply with the open meeting law, the motion to amend the agenda has to are has to be articulated, at least the grounds for it have to articulate a good faith reason why it could not have been placed on the agenda in advance. If this happened very, very recently and it just come to the board's attention. And I don't know, I have not received like this letter. I don't know exactly what what trustee Howard is is talking about because I haven't seen it. But we need to articulate a good faith reason for amending the agenda in the middle of the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Just a moment. I have a thought if I may share too, trustee Howard. We just talked about doing this auto reply, which would have been essentially half a dozen sentences. And trustee Barnes already had the template that he felt comfortable with to propose to us. And and it seemed that we decided that it's not appropriate to try to real time compose that. And we've had this kind of conversation in meetings past. So I don't know how we would compose a real time response to the tribal letter either. So honestly, I don't see how we could do anything at this time. Anyway, it has to be something that would have to be circulated, discussed, and probably brought up at the next meeting also. I don't see how we're going to generate a response to the tribe that's going to be thoughtful and appropriate if we can't even come up with an auto reply for the email. I mean, again, real time where we haven't had a chance to chew on it, discuss it, see it. I just saw the letter myself and I haven't read the whole thing. I glanced at it, did a quick skim of it tonight, first time I'd seen it before the meeting. So I just, I don't know that how far we want to go tonight to compose a response. And if I read the letter, what they're looking for is for us to give them an affirmation that, yeah, we support education and, yeah, we support the college. I'm not sure what what type of response we're looking to make here.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Howard.
Yes, let me first respond to the point raised by our attorney. I'm sorry, I didn't do that in the beginning. And the reason for putting this, amending the agenda and putting it on now is the fact that we just did receive the letter with, and I just read it yesterday. So there was insufficient time to put it on the the agenda. With regard to Chairman Banducci's concerns, it's not my idea of composing a letter at this meeting. It's to get the board's approval to address the letter so that it can be approved at the normal meeting in the middle of the month. So what I would like to do is have the board's approval that we proceed to draft an appropriate response, not some not just an automated response, but an appropriate response to the letter so that we can approve it at the the upcoming meeting.
Trustee Howard, who would you who would you propose would be drafting that response?
Well, I hadn't proposed anybody, but I mean, I'll be happy to do it because it concerns me.
I have a chair band duty for me.
Trustee McKenzie.
I have an interest in responding to them as well. And I'd be happy to collaborate with trustee Howard if he had me.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Just a moment, Mr. Lyons.
Yeah, my proposal is that we all, we all contribute to this letter. I'm not proposing that I or any other individual, even two of us, create the letter. I think we need to create a proposal to present to the board so that the board can approve the letter.
Okay, everybody, hold on for just a second. I'm going to backtrack just slightly here. Mr. Lyons gave us an input. Trustee Howard responded to that input. I guess I'm, I need to go back to Mr. Lyons because we still have a motion on the floor with a second to amend the agenda. And I guess I need an opinion from Mr. Lyons whether we feel that we have appropriate rationale to proceed to try to make this amendment.
Trustee trustee Mandigi, I've listened to it. There's a good faith reason why this was not put on before articulated in the motion. What I recommend that the board do at this time is take a vote on whether to amend the agenda. And if the vote is 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 positive, then you can discuss what And if the vote is, is, is positive, then you can discuss what, what you want to do with respect to. This letter and the response. But let's have a vote on the motion to amend the agenda first and then.
Chair.
Thank you. That, that's what I was thinking. That's why I wanted to circle back to you and, and deal with this, this first, so. We will take a vote on the amendment of the agenda. And then if it is approved, then we'll discuss. What the response would entail and what it looked like. All right, all those in favor?
Todd, there's another question on the floor.
Chair, Chair Banducci. I, I want to make a. Yes.
Dr. Smalley, yes, thank you, sorry.
We, we had somebody that was going to meet with us in executive session at 6:30 and I know Roberts Rules allows for us to. Move to that issue if it is more pressing or if we want to finish this, can we make sure somebody notifies? Peter, that we may be a couple of minutes later into executive session. Can we just shoot him a text?
Mr. Chair, can we just vote on this and get it over with?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Can we just vote on this motion and see what happens?
Yeah, we can vote on the motion and then I guess we can move forward from there. If you guys want to start trying to. Work with something, I guess we could try to do that in preparation for the next meeting. I mean, I, I don't know, Ken, we're going to vote to amend it, but we're going to run out of time if we have to shuffle. We're amending, but we're not going to have a response right now anyway, so I don't, I don't know. It seems to me we could just deal with this as ordinary business. Put it as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to get some, something going so that we're not sitting at the next meeting saying, okay, we got to appoint somebody to draft a letter. I would, assuming that we're going to approve a response to the tribe's letter. Then, I mean, I would be happy to see the administration draft a proposal for, to present to us. It's as simple as that. I don't, I don't present any comment, any content tonight. Just let's do something so that at the next meeting, we can respond to their letter.
Dr. Sabaly, is there somebody that can communicate with the individual that's waiting for the executive session to let them know that we're trying to tie this up?
Mark, can, can you send?
I, I, yes, I just sent him a text telling him we might be late.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, then we're back to, okay, so the motion is we're amending the agenda. So, and then we'll, we'll talk about maybe having the administration draft something. Okay, so. All those in favor of amending the agenda to add this agenda topic, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
How many ayes did I have? I'm, I need to do a roll call. I'm not sure who all I've heard. Trustee Wood, were you an aye?
Yes.
Trustee Howard, were you an aye?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes, were you an aye?
Trustee Barnes, you're muted.
That's why he was confused. I just apologize. Yes, aye.
Okay, trustee Barnes was an aye, okay. Trustee McKenzie, were you an aye or were you a nay?
I was a nay. I believe we can achieve all this without amending the agenda and still do what we're talking about this next meeting at a simple request.
Yeah, I, I think we're good either way, but the motion passes. So real quick then, because we do have somebody waiting for us. We've, we've amended the agenda. The agenda item is response to the letter from the tribe. Do I, do you feel the need to make a motion, trustee Howard, or do you just want to say with the administration? Try to work on a draft response that could be circulated to the trustees and sort of like the auto response, same idea. Get something out to us all so we can be prepared at the regularly scheduled board meeting to, to coalesce on it.
I do not believe we need a motion on this at this, this time. Just a direction to the administration to draft or create a draft that the trustees. Gives a chance to review before the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we need a motion.
You do or you do not, sir?
I do not think we need a motion.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in disagreement with that or can we move forward? Asking Dr. Sabaly and his staff to try to prepare a draft response for us that we can all review and. Come, hopefully come to agreement at the next board meeting. Not, not hearing any dissent there. We, we will not have a motion and. Dr. Sabaly, if you would take that as direction from the board as a whole, sir.
We will work on that.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else for this meeting before we entertain a motion to go into executive session? Okay, not hearing anything. Trustee Howard, would you like to come back to the motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't have the statutory citation to go into executive session for. If Mark would recite that to me, having to do with advice of counsel.
Oh, that's okay. If anybody else has it in front of them, I have it, but I, I usually don't make the motions. Does somebody else have it that can just make it?
Chairman Banducci, trustee Howard, that what we need at this point is a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74, 206, 1F. To communicate with legal counsel to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options regarding pending litigation.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second and a third. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call.
Are we going to a different Zoom link?
We are. Did someone just say we needed a roll call? Was that you, Mark?
Yes, that was, that was me. If you, if you would prefer, Mr. Chairman, I will do the roll call.
Please, sir, go ahead.
Okay, Banducci, trustee Banducci.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Aye.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Okay, it is 6:36 and we are in executive session. So right now. Trustee Banducci, we need to take a, a brief recess to get out of this particular Zoom link and then get on to the, to the executive session Zoom link.
Six, 6:45, everybody will be our targeted start in the executive session. Okay, it gives us nine minutes. Hopefully that'll be adequate. We'll adjust as, as necessary. All right, everybody back in a few.